Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, can I draw your attention to the fire regulations that are on the screen behind me. We're not anticipating any practices tonight, so if the alarm goes, it's for real. Please leave the chamber and the building by one of three exits, one, two and three. Don't use the lifts. We meet across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Councillors, can I ask us all to switch our mobiles to silent or off? And, members of the public, I know that this is a matter under consideration tonight, may be emotive, but I'd ask you to respect those around you in the public gallery and members of the committee, and refrain from booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. Before we move on to the meeting, just for the sake of the camera and the webcast, can I introduce the officers in front of me: Joe Ayers from the Legal Department, Peter Cleveland, who's the Development Control Manager, Jennifer Samuelson, who's the Senior Planning Officer, Elizabeth Sims, Head of our Planning Services. So let's move on to the agenda. Item number one. Emma, have there been any apologies for absence?
Yes, we have apologies from Councillor Band and Councillor Patricia Ellis is substitute.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Decorations of interest, Emma, again, members declared?
Yes, we've got a declaration of interest from Councillor Mary Forasewski. It's the same declaration as 2014, which I'll detail in a minute. Thank you. It's non-procurnary. Thank you.
Any others? Patricia, uh, Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I'm not sure whether I need to declare an interest, but I did speak at the inspector's hearing relating to the application.
We'll note that as a non-procurnary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emma, have there been any questions from members of the public?
None, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, A1, the planning application is under section 73 to vary conditions 1821 and 22 of WA 2014 0912, to allow alternative wording to include a phased proposal of the development. This application is accompanied by a statement of conformity to the environmental statement at land south of High Street between Alford Road and Noel Lane, Cranley. Peter, I think you're going to introduce this one, and then Jen.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The application before you tonight is not a type of application this committee has often considered. The application follows the approval of WA 2014 0912, as set out by the chairman, which allowed the construction of up to 425 dwellings. The application was approved at appeal, subject to 29 conditions in outline form. So this application is made under section 73 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990, as it seeks to vary conditions associated with that extent planning permission. Where an application is made under section 73, well, sorry, where an application under section 73 is granted, the effect is the issue of a new planning permission, sitting alongside the original permission, which remains intact and unamended. To assist with clarity, the decision notice for the granting of planning permission under section 73 should also repeat the relevant conditions from the original permission, unless, of course, they have been previously discharged. As a section 73 application cannot be used to vary time limit for implementation, this condition must remain unchanged from the original permission. Therefore, in allowing this application, it would not provide a longer term under which the applicants have to implement the planning permission. I just want to be clear that in assessing this application, given its nature and the extent planning permission, we must not revisit the principle of development, or technical matters in relation to the overall drainage strategy, for example, that have been agreed, or matters relating to highways, infrastructure, ecology, foul drainage, water quality and landscape impact, all of which were found to be acceptable in the inspector's conclusions on the application. Nor does it provide the opportunity to consider detail that is to be secured by the relevant conditions or agreed under the outline approval again. It is solely to consider the revised wording of the conditions, which then in turn secure the necessary detail which we will consult on through the normal process. So hopefully that's just to help as a background to the type of application and what we're looking at this evening. I'll now pass over to Jennifer to take you through the scheme to provide further context and the details of the three conditions which approval sought to amend. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. The site is located to the west of Noel Lane and east of Alford Road. Noel Lane runs down here and Alford Road down here. Cranley High Street is located to the north, along here. This is an aerial view of the application site. The site currently comprises of agricultural land subdivided by hedgerows into fields. A water course runs along the southern boundary, down here, and also through the western part of the site here. Just to touch on the planning history again, outline permission was granted on appeal for the erection of up to 425 dwellings, including affordable homes, associated works and new access from Noel Lane and Alford Road. Details of landscaping, scale, appearance and layout were reserved for subsequent approval under reserved matters applications. The plan shown on the screen shows the indicative layout of the development on the site, which would then be finalised at the reserved matters stage for each phase of development. 29 conditions were imposed by the inspector on the outline permission, and a section 106 agreement was signed to secure details such as infrastructure contributions and the affordable housing mix, as explained in full within the officer's report. The outline permission was secured and accepted as a phased development under the section 106 agreement and condition eight of the outline permission. The plan shown here illustrates the indicative phases of development as defined within the section 106 agreement. Reserved matters applications shall be submitted in phases on that basis. The applicant has provided a timetable for the intended submission of the reserved matters applications for each phase, as well as the intended commencement of construction for each phase. The dates are as follows. Phase one has already been submitted and is currently under consideration by officers. The applicant intends to commence development in July or August this year. Phase two is intended for submission to the council in April. The applicant then intends to commence construction on the bridges in December 2017, and then the foundations of the dwellings of phase two are intended to be commenced in July 2018. Phases three and four are intended for submission in October 2018, to commence the development in July 2019. It's important to note here that the timetable is indicative and dependent on the time taken to determine the reserved matters applications and discharge the relevant planning conditions. So the application under consideration this evening seeks to vary the wording of three conditions imposed on the outline permission, in order for them to be discharged in line with the phased approach to this development. For members' reference, the proposal section of the report, on pages seven to nine of the agenda, details the wording requested by the applicant on submission of the application. However, during consideration of the application, the conditions wording has been amended to take account of comments raised by the Leeds Local Flood Authority. Therefore, the officer's recommended wording for the conditions can be found on pages 60 to 62 of the agenda, under conditions 1821 and 22. I'll now go through each of the conditions individually. So condition 18 relates to the design details for the two proposed bridges, which would be erected over Little Mead Brook and the Nuthurst Stream. The purpose of the existing condition is to agree the proposed design of the bridges, which forms part of the flood risk management measures within the flood risk assessment submitted at the outline stage. The current wording requires the detailed designs for both river crossings to be approved prior to the approval of any reserved matters scheme on the site. The proposed wording would require approval of design details of the river crossings prior to the approval of the relevant phase of the reserved matters. Just for members to see here, the relevant phase for both bridges would be within phase two, at the western portion of the site, and they're just highlighted here in red. It's just the access road here and then across here. Officers consulted both the Leeds Local Flood Authority and the Environment Agency on the revised wording of this condition. Neither of these statutory consultees raised any objection. The revised wording of this condition would not affect the safety of access or egress of future occupiers on the site, as the condition would retain the requirement for the bridges to be implemented as approved prior to the first occupation of any dwelling within that phase. It is noted here that the wording of the condition would require the bridges to be implemented prior to the occupation of phase two of the development, being the relevant phase and not phase one. But I'd like to confirm that the bridges wouldn't be required for future occupiers of phase one of the development, as they are restricted in terms of vehicular access and can only be accessed from the Noel Lane side of the development. Therefore, they wouldn't be able to gain the vehicular access to or from Alford Lane and wouldn't require these bridges for safety purposes. Officers consider that the proposed revised wording would be acceptable and therefore would not cause harm to the safety of future occupiers of the site. Condition 21 relates to the submission of a detailed surface water drainage scheme for the site. The existing wording requires the surface water drainage scheme to be approved prior to the submission of any reserved matters. The proposed wording, however, requests that the details be agreed prior to the approval of reserved matters of each relevant phase. The proposed drainage scheme would be designed in accordance with the flood risk assessment approved at outline stage. The council consulted the Leeds Local Flood Authority and the Environment Agency on this condition. The Leeds Local Flood Authority, who are the statutory consultee on sustainable drainage systems, undertook an analysis of the flood risk assessment submitted at outline stage to ensure it was sufficiently detailed to be used as an overarching drainage statement, and is acceptable under current guidance and policy, given the time that has elapsed since the flood risk assessment was prepared for outline permission. The Leeds Local Flood Authority have confirmed that the flood risk assessment agreed at outline permission stage is appropriate and acceptable to be used as an overarching drainage statement. The wording of this condition has also been amended to include a provision that discharge rates off-site shall be no greater than greenfield discharge rates described therein, referring to the calculations found within the flood risk assessment. Overall, the Leeds Local Flood Authority is satisfied that the phasing of the drainage schemes, in line with each future reserve matters application, would be acceptable, given that each scheme would be related to each other through the overarching drainage statement. I'd just like to note here that the purpose of this application is to consider the acceptability of the revised wording. At the discharge of condition stage, officers would consider whether the proposed surface water management schemes for each phase would be acceptable, in consultation with the Leeds Local Flood Authority. Officers consider that the revised wording would be acceptable, given that all detailed drainage schemes would be required to follow the principles as set out with the flood risk assessment, which provides an overarching drainage statement for the site. Condition 22 relates to the submission of a maintenance and management scheme for the surface water drainage scheme. The existing condition states that no development shall take place until the maintenance and management scheme has been submitted and approved by the local planning authority. The proposed wording would state that no occupation of the relevant phase shall take place until the scheme has been approved by the local planning authority. The Leeds Local Flood Authority and Environment Agency have been consulted on this condition, and neither have raised objection to the amended wording. Officers are satisfied that the maintenance and management details would be in place prior to the occupation of each phase of development, and therefore consider the wording would be acceptable. The Leeds Local Flood Authority, as part of their response, identified this additional condition, which they consider to be necessary to ensure that the drainage scheme is implemented according to the details that are agreed. We consider that it is reasonable and necessary to impose this additional condition on any permission granted, given the time that has elapsed since the considerations and recommendations made on the outline permission. Since the submission of the outline application, the Environment Agency are no longer the statutory consultee with regard to sustainable drainage systems, and the duty is now passed to the Leeds Local Flood Authority. Furthermore, the regulations and requirements with regards to sustainable drainage systems have been updated. Officers consider that, given these changes, it would be reasonable to impose the additional condition at this stage. This is condition 23 on page 62 of the agenda for reference. Moving to the determining issues, with regard to the principle of development, the site is located within the countryside beyond the Green Belt, where the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside shall be protected. The principle of development on this site has been established by the granting of outline permission for the erection of up to 425 dwellings, and it is relevant that this outline permission could be implemented on the site following the approval of reserved matters applications. There have not been any material changes in planning circumstances, including from a policy or on-site point of view that indicates a different view should be taken to the principle of development and not to the time of the granting of outline permission. As such, members are advised it would be inappropriate and unreasonable to revisit the principle of the entire development. The outline permission was also granted as a phased development, as defined within the section 106 agreement, and therefore the principle of phasing has been established. With regard to the planning history, the differences between the outline permission approved by the inspector and this application lie solely in the wording of the three conditions, as discussed previously. With regard to the environmental impact assessment, a statement of conformity has been submitted, which identifies that the proposed amended wording of these conditions would not result in any additional impacts on the environment over that identified within the environmental statements submitted with the outline permission. And with regard to flooding and drainage considerations, as discussed within that section of the report in front of you, officers consider the rewording of the conditions would be acceptable and would not have a harmful impact on access or egress or the effective and successful drainage of surface water on the site. The matters of judgment which councillors are asked to consider this evening is the acceptability of the revised wording of the conditions 1821 and 22, and the acceptability of the additional condition number 23. To confirm, officers' recommended wording for each condition is set out on pages 60 to 62 of the agenda, and officers recommend permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. We now move to the public speaking, and I ask the parish councillor representative, Richard Brand, to step forward. You have four minutes, sir. Plenty.
Good evening, members. In asking for permission to phased developments, Berkeley Homes is also asking you to accept a change in construction access to phase one. Whilst Berkeley Homes have said that the primary access is from Noel Lane, with a secondary access from Alford Road, the developers are asking to be released from their commitment to provide this Alford Road access. Cranley Parish councillors are now questioning the Berkeley Homes' commitment to follow through with phases two and three, as the Alford Road access is primary for these phases, and, if constructed now, will provide a very welcome respite from construction traffic using the High Street. We believe that Berkeley Homes has not adequately taken into account the full impact of all construction traffic on our High Street and Noel Lane. There are real dangers at the junction of High Street and Noel Lane, and within 100 metres south of the junction. Here, the road is extremely narrow, with pavement on only one side of the lane, and in places there is no pavement at all. In addition, curbside tyres have vehicles parking outside, whilst the bakery will have problems with egress. As there are weight restrictions south of the development, it means all construction traffic will have to come via the High Street. Cranley is taking an inordinate amount of Wavely development, and we would ask that members consider the seriousness of the impact and keep Berkeley Homes to the conditions agreed at the appeal 12 months ago. Thank you. I said it would be short, and it was.
Thank you very much, Richard. Members, open it up to you.
Thank you, Chairman. I accept that outline permission was granted at appeal for the development in this particularly lovely part of Cranley, and we are where we are, perhaps sadly. However, I do feel very strongly that one cannot consider any part of the site in isolation from the others, particularly with regard to the associated issues of the bridges and the drainage scheme for surface water. The drainage works will need to be dependable and effective for the site as a whole, and I do believe that it is vital this is agreed for the whole site at this early stage. It is also clear that phase one concentrates on the expensive higher end of the market properties for the erection of 55 dwellings, and does not include any of the proposed affordable properties that are needed in Cranley. This causes me some disquiet, despite the principle of phasing having been agreed. With regard to conditions 1821 and 22, I strongly object to the changing of the wording and firmly believe that these previously agreed conditions should be adhered to. I have absolutely no reason to think that this developer is anything other than honest and transparent, but in view of the very regular, wet and muddy nature of the site which is in my ward, I firmly believe that the current wording of the conditions is completely necessary and is there for very valid reasons. In fact, with nationally recognised changes in weather patterns and increasingly heavy rainfall, we should perhaps be tightening rather than relaxing the conditions. This site, as has been mentioned by the officer, and I thank her for an excellent report, is currently agricultural land and in parts wooded, but we should not ignore the properties and the residents who do live in close proximity. And I believe that in some respects, these three conditions were imposed to protect not only the new properties, but also the existing. I believe that the development of this site, which will take many years to complete, will cause the residents already living in the area very significant inconvenience, and we should not in any way support a possible or increased risk of flooding and damage to their properties. I believe that we should insist on the conditions remaining that will hopefully offer protection to these people and their homes. To alter conditions 1821 and 22, would I believe, leave us open to finding that these matters have not been dealt with before some properties have been completed, and then my fear would be that we could be asked to rethink the conditions on the basis of what harm would there be? We already face this question with regard to other infringements relating to other sites, and we should remain mindful that this site and the development is so large that it will have an irreversible impact on the residents' and amenity value of living in the village. I'm sorry, but with respect to the officers at this time, I do not believe that I can support the recommendations to vary the three very important conditions, and wish to ensure that they remain in place as originally worded. That would ensure that the bridges are in place prior to the first occupation of any dwelling on the site, the vital and detailed sustainable surface water drainage scheme covering the whole site is submitted and approved, and that the details of future continued maintenance and management of the surface water drainage scheme for the whole site has been submitted and approved, and cannot be reduced in its effectiveness and protection of all residents on the site and in the wider area. I'm hopeful that the conditions as currently agreed will be adhered to and strictly enforced. Thank you.
And Councillor, Councillor Forasewski.
Thank you, Chairman. You'll be pleased to know I have very little to say on this matter, as our hands are tied very much. I get that there's not much we can do, because the principle of development has already been established. However, I also appreciate we can't revisit the principle of development, we can't look at the original application, because an inspector upheld it at appeal. But although this is seemingly straightforward, and it is contentious, it's not as contentious as it would appear, but it has deeper meaning, because it reflects the viability of the whole site. Because I think by bringing in the phasing, what they're actually saying is they cannot complete the whole of the development unless they phase it. Where I have strong reservations and objections to this, is that they're going to start to build the most expensive and exclusive part of the scheme at the further end of town, which is going to impact greatly on, did I say town? Village, sorry. Which will impact, well, it's because the development is getting bigger and bigger, you know, so that's a Freudian slip. The impact on the High Street from there and on to Noel Lane. We've also got talk about a hospital being, not a hospital, a nursing home being built in the near future, which abuts the access on to this particular site, which again causes me massive concern. And interestingly, there's a lot of apathy now. I mean, 2014, we sat here, it was turned down by members of this committee, it went to appeal and won. And interestingly, the apathy that's out there is enormous. Twenty-three of the consultees didn't even bother to respond. I think that's pitiful. And I also look at some of the conditions that we've been asked to perhaps strengthen. If we go to page 14, the council's environmental health officer talks about that there will be little impact on environmental health, but a phased development may create additional noise issues on-site and therefore an additional condition is recommended. And I'd like that, if this was to go ahead, if members are minded, to actually look at that in more detail. Why I would look at that in particular is because of the greater impact. What we're seeing at the moment is, do you know, I could cry, I could weep when I actually see now what's happening to Cranley, and anybody who's in doubt about what's happening, about the impact on development in Wavely, please visit Cranley, because right here, right now, it's like a building site. And we've been told that this site, this site's going to go to 2019, so Cranley's going to become a construction site for the years to come. Carla Homes, Horsham Roads and several other small developments have all started construction at the same time. So what we're seeing is an environmental impact that is enormous, because the noise levels, as we see them currently, has risen drastically. From being able to hear a pin drop, we now, all we can hear is dulcet tones of construction, and that's going to go on for years to come, and that's why I think we should not be, we should be giving the clear message that if on approval, this is what is being granted, it should be accepted, the viability should come later. And it's not our problem to look at the viability, it is up to the developer to look at that. So I think we have a duty to uphold the original conditions. I think an inspector's got an awful lot to answer for, because in part of their report, it actually talks about the phasing and almost says that it's quite acceptable for the phasing to go ahead, but what it doesn't take into account is the impact that it has on the village with all the cumulative building and development that's taking place. So like my fellow councillor, this was brought to committee by members, had it not come to committee, it would have been done under delegated powers. I think that sends the wrong message, and I think if we're going to, if members are minded to support this, we should also look at robustly defending and including some other conditions that will make this stronger. Thank you for listening to me, Chairman. I've got one more to comment, but I shall leave that till later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Montherm.
Thank you, Chairman. Question really. If I read the first condition, 18, the change relates to the submission of design details for the bridges, but the new condition, as with the existing condition, still requires the works, the construction of the bridges, to be implemented as approved prior to first occupation of any development on the site. So it seems to me that there can be no adverse effects from allowing later agreement of the design details, because they can't get anything occupied until they've built the bridges. And I understand the concerns people have about safe access, but I don't think that's actually adversely affected in any way by this new condition. And in condition 21, I'm pleased to see that, again, it's a matter of submitting a scheme. I can't really see whether it matters, because you can't occupy the properties until the details have been approved. I see in old condition 21, it was I see in old Condition twenty-one, it was prior to submission of reserved matters, and this is prior to approval of reserved matters. Given they can't start building until they've got approval of reserved matters, I can't quite see what the problem is. And the third one, again, is concerning with submitting details. These are bound to be in advance of occupation, and of course, it's concerned with the future management and maintenance or maintenance and management. And we're not going to know whether they're doing that properly until the future has come to pass and become the history, and we can see whether the scheme actually works or not. So while I can understand the concern of local residents and probably the feeling that the developer's getting away with something, I don't actually think on reading it carefully they do, because the key words at the end of both the old Condition eighteen and new Condition eighteen, that those bridges have to be in place and working before you can put a single—you can occupy a single building, and that's nothing to do with phases either, that's the entire site. So unless I've got something wrong, I'm not sure what the problem is.
Who wants to take that one? Peter or Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's just up on screen, the proposed wording. The point that Jennifer was referring to, the wording, the condition, right at the bottom of the screen on the proposed wording, it does—is right down there, you might have seen it, but it does say within that phase, so it deals with the bridge condition, but you wouldn't be able to occupy a dwelling within effectively Phase Two where the bridges are. So the wording picks up that. So it doesn't—it doesn't mean that you wouldn't be able to occupy a dwelling within Phase One, it relates to that specific phase, but effectively, you're still correct in your interpretation, you wouldn't be able to occupy that part of the site until that detail had been agreed. Thank you, Chairman.
Could I ask, was there an update sheet with that change? I didn't see it on the screen, I must have bitten—our attention wasn't actually drawn to it. I was actually making the mistake of reading the original documents carefully.
Yeah, I think if you go to page sixty-one, sixty and sixty-one, the conditions have been altered from the words that Barclay Homes submitted. Correct, Peter? Thank you.
Then I ask that these officers do make sure the document is consistent throughout.
Counselor Story.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In defence of the officers, that was actually pointed out earlier on, so I'm sorry, Counselor Mulliner, that you obviously missed it. My own point is that I sympathise greatly with Counselor Ellis and Counselor Forashevsky, but as Counselor Forashevsky said, the conditions which have been approved by the planning inspector are for a phased development. We don't have the authority now to say we can't have a phased development, and so I think that this—these conditions as changed are probably worth doing, and I will be supporting them.
Counselor Ellis.
Chair, I'm on. Thank you, Chairman. It looks like I'm going to have to be disagreeing quite strongly in some respects with—not Counselor Ellis, actually, but with Counselor Forashevsky and Counselor Mulliner, particularly in respect of Counselor Mulliner's comment. I think my concern in respect of this is that it allows it to—building to be carried out by changing it to first—prior to first occupation, it allows it—building to be carried out, and as Counselor Mrs. Ellis pointed out, there have been other precedents, there have been other developments elsewhere in the borough where changing of the conditions makes a considerable—can make have a considerable impact. We've got one in Farnham, it's a construction access bridge but not a—absolutely similar situation, so similar in fact that the oh-nine-one-two application number is the same, it was two thousand and twelve oh-nine-one-two there, which is varied by condition to phase and to remove a lot of the difficulties, consented as necessary by JPC and as with these bridges were, and we expect the applicant to overcome any problems of ownership, whatever it happens to be. And then we see the requirements eroded or negated bit by bit at discharge of conditions or previously, as in this case, by delegated—or under delegated powers, or under a variation of conditions as we're seeing here. It's not too late to correct those things elsewhere, and certainly here tonight, we can make sure that that mistake isn't repeated. If—I'm right, if that is a mistake, and I think it is a mistake to allow them to construct fifty homes or more, fifty-five or more, and then come to us possibly saying, well, it's too difficult for us to do these bridges and things, we've already built them, what are we going to do? Make them, take them down? Well, we're not going to do that, are we? We would be forced to allow them to not sort out the nutted stream bridge or whatever it was. So I disagree with Counselor Muller in that respect, I think it's very important. I agree with—I think Counselor Ellis and perhaps Counselor Forashevsky in that respect. I do disagree with Counselor Forashevsky in respect of the issue of that we cannot revisit. This is EIA application, and we can revisit any principles if there was a significant error made, that's in case law. I'd like our officers to take legal advice if necessary to confirm that. If it is evident that the original EIA is incomplete, errant or out of date, then at whatever stage, later stage, it must be reassessed and reconsidered.
Excuse me, Counselor. I think page twenty-five, the EIA says there's no material effect. Page twenty-five?
That's not the point, that's a completely different point, Chairman. Thanks for raising that, but that's not the point I'm making. For EIA developments, if for instance, there are problems, errors in the original EIA, whether it was—whether it got passed an inspector or not, if we are aware that there are likely significant effects which have not been considered at an earlier stage, then it must be reconsidered. We have a—there is a—this came from the—it wasn't the Barclay Homes one in London, actually, it came from the White City and Crystal Palace judgements.
Okay, we're not talking about the White City. Can I ask Elizabeth Sins to comment and to Joaz, please?
Chairman, sorry, I'm a little away from the microphone. Chairman, if I could just help on that point. Clearly, the original planning permission was EIA development, and the recommendation to the council, the committee at the time of recommending approval for it was that in terms of the information, the environmental information that had been submitted in relation to the application, we were satisfied it was sufficient for you to make a decision on the application. Obviously, our assessment against the criteria was that the application was acceptable, members disagreed with that, it did go to appeal, but the fundamental point is the EIA was not defective, it was sound basis upon which to make a decision, and clearly the inspector did not disagree with that. So I just wanted to clarify that because reference was made to the fact that the original EIA for this site may have been at fault in some way, but as far as we're concerned, there was no valid criticism, it remained a valid basis under the environmental impact assessment regulations to assess the application. Thank you, Chair.
Joaz, do you want to add anything? No?
Chair, I don't have anything further to say, other than, you know, essentially, this is a—this is an application to various conditions, and actually, I'm not aware that you can revisit it in such a massive—if there has been no problem found with the EIA, which according to the head of planning, there hasn't been.
Thank you. I trust you take that advice on board. Counselor Hyman?
No, that hasn't actually answered the questions that I posed in the first place. It's completely avoided the issue with the responses that we've had there. The point is that it's established in law that if at this stage, it is evident—it's paragraph forty-eight of the Barker judgment, I'm pretty sure, paragraph one hundred of the—or ninety-nine of the Crystal Palace, White City judgment. I'll give you the numbers of them if you want. They state that—
We are not here to talk—
Consent is not granted.
Excuse me, I'm in the chair. Counselor Hyman, can I finish? We're not here to talk about Crystal Palace or case law, we have had our officers give their judgement on this matter, we are here to talk about the three conditions that have been put forward to change.
Absolutely, Chairman, but I was elected as a representative of residents and on the grounds that they expect us to obey the law, and if the law isn't being explained properly—
Chairman, if Counselor Hyman is suggesting that we are acting illegally, would you please put that in writing to the monitoring officer?
Yes.
I'm not saying that we're acting unlawfully, in fact, that's people putting words into my mouth, Chairman. If I may explain as a point of personal explanation, I am asking for confirmation that the White City and other judgments, Barker judgments, apply here, and therefore that the statements made saying that we cannot revisit the principle and we cannot correct any mistakes if we know there are some from the past, is actually incorrect. That advice is not correct because it has been established in law, and we must act within the law here tonight. I'm not saying we're not doing—
Thank you, we will act within the law, and we are all here to take that on board. Thank you very much for that. Next speaker is—Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, welcome back to Cranley. You know, instinctively, I'm like most members round here, I don't like section seventy-three As, I don't like changes, you always feel there's a reason for it, and you know, we're naturally suspicious people, but I have to say, looking at these conditions and the changes, I really think, you know, that's—I mean, yes, they're big conditions, but then it's a big application, and there was no way you were going to do a four-phase application by doing everything in one go, I mean, it just would never happen, even if it weren't specified. And as far as I can see, what we're being asked to change here is perfectly reasonable. You know, it's just really about timing, it's buttoned in well, we've got an extra condition as well, just to tie one or two loose ends, and I really do think we've got to get this into perspective. As I say, as somebody who's instinctively against changes to conditions, I actually find these relatively small changes, given the size of the development and the logistics of actually developing a site of this size, so—thank you, Chairman.
Certainly, in the initial phases, it was presented as four, the inspector said it was in four phases, and I don't think any developer would be building four hundred and twenty-five homes at the same time. Other members? Counselor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just come back on my understanding of this, I've got two concerns. One, not that it's being phased, but the fact—the content of the phase, and it's been said here clearly that this is disproportionate, emphasis on the more expensive, lack of any of the affordable, and do one—my first question is, do we have any say over that? And secondly, although I accept the points that Counselor Coburn made, I am concerned about the changes to clause eighteen, which does appear to affect the transport access and the construction transport access. If the bridges were built as part of the—part of any precondition, then you've got an alternative access to this. I mean, knowing the area, the access is going to be difficult for the site wherever it is, but at least with the bridges, then you've got some—some ability to take some pressure off the High Street, and that seems to me to be fundamental. I don't see that the officers have really made any comments on the construction traffic method of constructions within their report, so perhaps they could come back on, one, the phasing, and secondly, the construction traffic impact of changing clause eighteen.
Thank you, I think the inspector made some comments on transport. Counselor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. Two questions, really. The first question is, are you going to take each condition individually as a vote or take them all together, that's the first thing? And the second thing is, on Condition eighteen, I don't quite understand why the reference to the drawing of the bridge elevations has been taken out. Surely, that's quite important for this planning application, and it should be kept in.
The answer to the first question is, the recommendation is all three together. Peter or Jennifer, do you want to come back? Counselor Forashevsky.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. I think part of the problem with an application like this, it's the first of its kind, or one of the first of its kind, we're in unknown territory, so everything we do when we look at these particular applications is very new to us because they're an exception to policy, because we're building on the green field, so I'm not at all surprised that we are actually looking at pitfalls that may happen and perhaps making a bigger deal than most—than people would think, but I do think they are important to look at in detail because, as I say, it is unknown territory. And if I can explain, and I'm sure Counselor Ellis would agree with me, part of the concerns with this application and the phasing of it was that the village, many of the residents in the village, including the parish council, feared that there could be making money and run. But I'm now pleased to know that you've got commitment, that you will have phases with dates against them, and I think, again, that needs to be strengthened, but I think there was real—there's real worries from residents that people will probably end up with a development that's not going to be completed, won't deliver on the affordable housing, get more big, expensive, exclusive houses, and that'll be done. So I think as a committee, we need to really reinforce that what we're doing is correct and make sure that the developer builds and delivers what they say they will. My final point, and after this, I'm not going to say any more because, as I say, I could weep, my final point is how things change. Counselor Hyman wasn't around when this application first came to committee, and I mean, we sat for several hours that night debating it, I remember it very, very well. Then we sat down for, I think, five days through a most gruelling hearing that—through the inquiry that was fascinating, but it—you know, we've looked at this in some depth. But how things have changed, if you go to the inspector's report on page eighty, it talks about Dunstfold Park and Hewitts Industrial Estate. In a very short period of time, two major changes which could have affected had the time they'd been considered as part of brownfield sites and accountable for a five-year housing supply. The changes now—I'm not going to read it because it's there in front of everybody to read. Dunstfold Park since then has got its permission, and Hewitts Industrial Estate, which was claimed as an employment site which heavily was dependent on the inspector's comment, is no longer because that lost a—they won their appeal as well, so they are no longer an employment site, so they will probably come back with their original application for a hundred and twenty houses. It's a reflection in a very short period of time, how things do change, and even a inspector can view something then, which in a very short period of time can change drastically what we're doing as a borough council, so we need to be more forward-thinking in what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and everyone for listening to me.
Thank you. I'll just take those five on the idea of the recommendations, one by one. Peter Cleveland.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. In terms of the—considering each condition one by one, no, it's our recommendation, it should be taken as a whole under the one application and one vote on those—from our point of view. There was a couple of points, one by Counselor Gray, one by Counselor Holder as well, I'll be happy to pick those up. In terms of Phase One, that was always and still is to be accessed off of Noel Lane. The construction management plan will pick up the specific details of how that's—how they're routed into the site and controlled and managed at that point, and the detailed transport assessment considered the impact of the access on to Noel Lane, so that has not changed, so that'll be there. There was a point regarding the reference to the Condition eighteen and specifically the drawing number. The condition refers specifically to compliance with the flood risk assessment, which includes that drawing number, so it ties it all up. It doesn't specifically draw out that specific drawing number out of the flood risk assessment, but it requires it in compliance with that. That plan forms part of that document, so it's covered off from that point of view.
Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I ask the officer a simple question for you, but a very difficult one for me? When the planning permission was granted at appeal, did they specifically have Phase One, Two, Three, Four laid out? Because—they did, did they? Fine, then my second question's irrelevant, thank you.
I haven't got anything more to add, but that's the—an extract from the legal agreement, which was on the table in front of the inspector. Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. Just listening to the concerns of the parish council and the local councillors, having been well acquainted with bridges and developments and trying to get traffic out of the High Street in a more local context in Farnham, I have a sort of general feeling that anything that is likely to lessen the traffic going down Cranley High Street has got to be quite appealing. Whether the bridge is specifically built for the residents or not, it seems quite reasonable that development traffic should use it. Having recently had a flood in a flat— Having recently had a flood in a flat, too, one of the things I have learnt is that water does go in unexpected places. And once one talks about any form of flood risk anywhere in a dirt development, I am more inclined to say, let us do what we can to ameliorate the flood risk before we start developing, because strange and wonderful things sometimes happen with water. So I have a lot of sympathy with some of the things I've heard. I understand the slight distrust of the developers that they might cut and run, although actually that might be quite appealing because you get a lot of less houses in Cranley. So I think probably on a sheer profit basis for the developer, that won't happen. I suppose we all know that inspectors from Bristol are omnipotent and cannot make mistakes and we cannot challenge any of their decisions, however strange we find them. So I'm rather inclined to go along with that thought that they are omnipotent and if they've imposed these conditions, to let them stand as they impose them.
Thank you. councillor Gray.
Thank you for letting me come back, Chairman. I just want to pick up the response that I got to my question about clause eighteen. I mean, if nothing has changed, if it was always considered that phase one would be accessed off Noel Lane, why are we making the changes? And going back to the comment that my fellow councillor just made, the inspector basically approved this, approved the conditions, and I think we're being a bit over generous by allowing these to come through and the changes being made without really seriously challenging, especially the one on condition eighteen, which I still got great concerns about.
councillor Hunter. No?
Chairman.
councillor Hunter, do you want to come back?
Thank you. I'll take up the EIA issue because obviously nobody's willing to think about it. The EIA issue, which, you know, I do think particularly the local members for Cranley would, should take it up because it is a matter that does allow them to revisit where mistakes have been made. I'm not saying I know mistakes have been made in the EIA because, as you know, you know, I'm not an expert on this, on the history of this application, only what I've read. But you may well know whether that's an opportunity and whether you should be applying the law as it's been determined in the courts. But anyway, is it possible for me to propose that we take them individually? My reasoning being that I think I would wish to vote against one of them, or two of them, but possibly in favour of one of the others, and I would have to vote against all of them if we weren't to take them individually. So I'd like to do it individually if we may.
Again, I will refer to the officers on that point. peter Cleveland.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. What the application is, is a holistic approach or proposal to amend conditions. The recommendation put forward is they're taken as one, what's been sought as they're amended, they follow each other. And if you weren't to amend one and amend another, you know, you sort of catch twenty-two really, you can do one thing but you can't do the next thing. So it would be very unusual to take that approach and it doesn't, doesn't address the question that's been asked of the planning authority. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. The answer is you can vote against.
But the answer is...
The answer is we'll take all three together.
That I may or may not propose it, because I will propose it now if I may do so. If it's up to us as to whether we wish to, then I would propose that, I think.
councillor Coburn.
Surely, this is a planning application, like all other planning applications, so we have to take what's ahead of us on the paper and judge it. We don't pick and choose, we don't decide whether we'd like the garage but not the bit in the roof. I mean, we've got an application here and it's to vary three conditions. Let's look at the application as it stands and vote on it as it stands.
That is why I suggested that we stick with the recommendation, all three, and if you don't like them, you vote against, if you do like them, you vote for granting. Can I ask, councillor Mullner, you wish to come back?
Thank you very much, Chairman. It's a quick question, really. councillor Holder referred to it, I'm not sure he was answered. Is there any particular reason why the reference to the drawing number oh five seven six et cetera has been deleted from the revised condition eighteen?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Mullner. The only reason is, is by adding it in, it doesn't add anything more to the condition because it requires compliance with the flood risk assessment. The flood risk assessment, a part of the flood risk assessment is that plan. So if it's in there, isn't it, makes no difference to compliance with that document. The inspector put it in there, I can't say, but that was, that is the way we would usually frame that condition. There is one point which I didn't come back to on councillor Gray, and I don't know if it's helpful or not, but there was a question asked about why, the point about the phasing and that. And if you, we haven't got it on screen, but in front of me, I've got the section one oh six legal agreement. And that clearly sets out the affordable housing and the specific numbers, tenure mix and everything, and which phases they would be delivered in. And they're delivered in phases two, three and four. So it's correct that there's none in phase one, but that's because that's what the section one oh six clearly sets out and was accepted. So hopefully that's helpful. Apologies, I didn't pick up on that. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Gray, you wish to come back?
Yeah, just to clarify this question of eighteen, I said, if the phasing was agreed previously, and it's all, it's all okay, why are we making a change? We seem to be making a change which basically takes away a condition that said the bridges had to be agreed, produced prior to any of the phases. We're now making a change. So if it was in, within the original agreement, we shouldn't need this alteration. And if it's now being altered, we should be very careful as to whether we approve it or not.
Thank you, Chairman. The reference to the bridges, is it, is they're an important part of the scheme, but they're not relevant to the build-out and they're not required to build out and construct phase one. So it's irrelevant to pick up that detail at that stage to service that form of development. So that's the reason why we're seeking agreement on that amendment, because they're two separate parts of the scheme and don't require each other to actually deliver that part or that phase. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Gray.
Thank you for letting me come back again. I understand the point that's just been made. It's not, it's not required, but the original inspector's approval and the conditions were there. Why are we basically putting forward a change? Because the way that it was worded is that the bridges must be considered. Now, we are actually taking an interpretation by saying they're not required. I'm hearing an interpretation of what was said. I'd be a lot happier sticking with what the inspector originally agreed and the conditions in respect of clause eighteen.
Thank you, Chairman. I think what's helpful to reflect on in this instance is that clearly, permission was granted, subject to the section one oh six. And as Peter has displayed, the inspector's expectation by definition through the section one oh six agreement that this would be a phased development, that is, that is a fact, that is the permission that we have. The fact that the discharge of conditions wasn't specifically phased... Sorry, Chairman. Is an observation, and that's the point you're making, councillor Gray, why are we then changing that? To some extent, this is a tidying up. This is aligning the conditions with the very strong expectation requirement of the legal agreement. Perhaps it was remiss of the inspector not to anticipate that and recommend the conditions were phrased in that way. Perhaps the wall doesn't agree with me on that. But that has to be said, that at present, the expectation of the legal agreement is to some extent out of sync with the conditions. What it cannot set aside is the reasonable expectation on the part of the applicant to suggest and propose that the conditions are varied. Now, it is within your gift to reject that on the basis of, well, why change it when the inspector didn't impose it? But clearly, that is not the end of it. You have to, as planning authority, make a reasonable decision. And if you're going to reject the notion that notwithstanding the one oh six suggesting it's phased, you do not want to phase the conditions, you'll have to have very good reasons for suggesting you don't want the discharge of conditions to be phased. And that comes down to what harm will it cause in planning terms if you require it all to be delivered together upfront in the way that the inspector has suggested through the current set of conditions? That's where we take our technical advice. And we've sought a lot of advice, particularly from the lead local flood authority, on the flooding matters. Will this cause harm or doing it in phases, will it still achieve the end result, protect the development and residents from flood risk and achieve an acceptable delivery of all the critical components of the scheme? And of course, the answer's coming out of that, as reflected in our report, there is no material objection to doing it in this way. So I hope that's helped. It is a change, it has varied from the position of the inspector, but our recommendation is, in planning terms, there's no overt material objection to raise against the approach that they're taking. What you want to be satisfied is, is the replacement permission that you would be granting, if you grant it, is robust, is lawful, is legal, takes into account the previous environmental information and is enforceable. And our recommendation, together with our legal advice, is you would be able to rely on the replacement permission to be as robust as the existing outline consent that's been granted. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Hunter.
My concern of change in condition eighteen is the second entrance. When you're only going to have one entrance, it's going to cause problems with construction machines. And to me, I don't accept that.
councillor Mullner, you want to come back?
I've got another question. Is there anything to stop the applicant legally from deciding to draw stumps after phase
Thank you, Chairman. There's nothing to stop any developer stopping work after they've commenced. There's nothing we can, we can do about that. There's a, there's a legal agreement in place to secure the provisions, but for whatever reason, we can't control if they decide not to continue or complete the development.
Thank you. I should have asked that question a joker. I think the one thing which does make eighteen separate from the others, and I can see no objection to twenty-one or twenty-two being changed and twenty-three, makes that change completely unconcerning. But there's no doubt the point's been made that if you've got the extra access there, first of all, you've got an alternative method of access even to phase one, which would possibly have benefits for the surroundings. And secondly, it gives us slightly greater confidence that the whole thing will go through. Now, the developer is a respectable body and possibly this is being over paranoid, but it seems to me that, I think it's wrong to describe this change as being completely formalistic. Although the bridges have the most relevance to phases two, three and four, it's unfair to say they have no relevance to phase one. And I can understand colleagues who are a bit concerned about that, and I must admit, I'm slightly in two minds myself. Thank you.
councillor Hymen, you want to come back?
Thank you. As I've said, I've got deja vu on this because we went through it elsewhere four years ago. I have some deja vu on this because I saw, I saw this four years ago in another development and the dangers of making changes like this and how it pans out in real life. But, you know, but I haven't changed my position, I don't think, on condition eighteen in respect of ensuring the provision of the whole development as it was permitted in outline and fourteen oh nine one two. So I do think, unless I hear otherwise, I would, will have to vote against all of these. But I'd like to know from the officers if they can clarify for me why we've got application sixteen twenty-one sixty pending, which is the very, which is the detailed application for the first phase. I'm wondering why were these changes not put in there? Is there something I'm missing as to, does this have to be done before that comes forward? Because I see it sitting there awaiting determination to come before us, two applications for the same thing and they've been done separately. So is there a good reason that they have put this in separately to be, not to be judged at the same time? I don't know. I'm thinking the answer to that might change my opinion. I don't understand that bit about this application.
peter Cleveland.
Thank you, Chairman. The two applications referred to, the one before you is a variation of condition, that's one planning application, and the second application is details pursuant to reserve matters. That is a live planning application. We haven't got to a position where we're in a position to make a recommendation on that, so it's not been before the committee. But as and when officers are comfortable to make a recommendation, that will be reported to the committee at the time. But they're not, you know, we're not, it's not waiting on this one to be decided for that one to be determined. We could determine that as and when it's ready. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Forrowsky.
Very quickly, Chairman, myself and Patricia Ellis, councillor Ellis, must take some responsibility for us being here this evening because we did call it to committee, otherwise it would have been done under delegated powers a long time ago and therefore you wouldn't see the synergy between the two. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that. I think it's a balancing act as well. Do the officers have any... councillor Adams, do you want to come in?
I can see the argument about, not about worrying about whether the bridge is going to be built, but it seems to me the only issue here, one set of conditions is already in existence, the other is may or may not pass tonight. But the only thing I can see is that by enforcing the current conditions, it will in fact delay probably the start of the development and our consequent revenue to Waverley for that delay.
Thank you. Do the officers have any further comment, summing up points at this point? In which case, members, that we'll move to recommendation. Having regards to the environmental information contained within the application, the accompanying environmental statement in response to it and compliance with the completed section one oh six agreement under WA twenty fourteen zero nine one two and subject to the conditions, permission be granted. May I have those in favour? Please show.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Abstentions? One.
One.
Thank you very much. Therefore, permission is granted, members. Thank you very much indeed for that. Can I, just before we disperse, say thank you very much to Joez for her time at Waverley and her legal advice. She's off to pins in the very near future, so we wish you well. Thank you very much, members.